Call this meeting to order for York School District One, Executive Session. For Section thirty dash four dash seven zero, the board will go into Executive Session for the following two items: Discussion of Employment, Appointment, Compensation, Promotion, Demotion, Discipline, or Release of an Employee, a Student, or a Person Regulated by a Public Body, or the Appointment of a Person to a Public Body. However, if an Adversary Hearing involving the Employee or Client is held, the employer or client...
You gonna read all of it?
Nothing contained in this... Nothing contained in this item shall prevent the Public Body in its discretion from deleting the names of the other employees or clients whose records are submitting for use at the hearing. Number two, Discussion of Negotiations, Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements and Proposal, Proposed Sale or Purchase of Property, the Receipt of Legal Advice, where the legal advice relates to a Pending Threaten or Potential Claim or Other Matters Covered by the Attorney-Client Privilege, Settlement of Legal Claims, or the Position of the Public Agency in Other Adversary Situations Involving the Assertion Against the Agency of a Claim. Do we have a motion for Executive Session for Certified Personnel and Legal Matters?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Revel, the second by Ms. Johnson. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will now go into Executive Session. All those favor say aye. Opposed, no. There was no action taken during Executive Session. Call this meeting to order for the General Session. York School District One, Board of Trustees. Now I have invocation by Reverend Brown, St. John's Baptist Church. Mr. Reverend Brown?
Let us pray. Eternal in our wise and gracious God, that heavenly Father, the giver of every good gift and every perfect gift, our Father and our God. Lord God, we do thank and praise you just for another opportunity to call on your holy righteous name. We thank and praise your God for allowing us to see another day, knowing that we realize that it is a day we've never seen before and a day we'll never see again. But the word of God says this is the day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and we shall be glad in here. In spite of the situations and circumstances, we know we are able to work out everything for our good. So we cast all of our cares upon you, and we just thank you again for just allowing us to see this day. As we gather, oh God, in another school board meeting, oh Father God, we ask your blessings upon the trustee board, our wonderful superintendent that you have blessed us with, oh God, and we just continue to pray for everyone that took time out of their busy schedule to come to be a part of this session, and we know school has just started, God. to come to be a part of this session, and we know school has just started, God. So we always pray and act that you will keep your angel camp over loving arm protection around our teachers, our bus drivers, our students, everyone that plays an important part of educating our children, please watch over them and take care of them, not only just for District One, but all of our districts, oh God. Because we realize that, no, we're living in perilous times, but we know, God, that we put our faith and trust in you, you can work out everything. So we cast our cares upon you, and we give it to you, and you continue to bless and keep us all in your perfect will, that everything we do and say will be well pleasing in your sight. We ask these things in Jesus' name, and for Christ's sake, we pray, amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you Reverend Brown. Let record reflect, we do have a forum present with all members present. Now I have the pledge of allegiance by Casey Wilkinson, Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center student. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have confirmation notice to media, are any members of the media present? No members of the media appear to be present. We do not have anyone to speak in a public forum session. We'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Some move for adoption.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Well now to move into recognitions, Ms. Lisa Spangler.
We'd first like to call Ms. Beth Faulkner, who's one of our board members forward. Congratulations to Beth Faulkner for reaching Level One in the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute. Board member and lead leadership training is a priority for South Carolina School Boards Association. Established in 1982, the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national education issues. We are always pleased to honor those who have reached one of the six levels in the Boardsmanship Institute. Congratulations to Ms. Faulkner, who have, who has reached a new level in fiscal year 2324. Like to invite Dr. Lee Green to come forward, the Director of Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center, along with Mr. Josh Williams, who's the advisor for Future Farmers of America. And first, we'd like to recognize Cameron Williams. Cameron Williams is a 2024 graduate of YCHS and served as Vice President of the York FFA during his time in high school. As a senior, he won the title of South Carolina Mr. FFA in February. Most recently, he was named the State FFA President and has been participating in leadership workshops throughout the summer as he begins his tenure as president. Cameron is the 18th state officer from York and only the second state FFA president from York, with the first being in 1975. So you broke a record. He will be attending Clemson University, go Tigers, to major in agribusiness. In fact, he leaves early tomorrow morning to begin his first year there. A huge congratulations for a job well done. And next, we'd like to invite forward Casey Wilkinson. Casey is a current senior and will be a 25 graduate of YCHS. She is the acting FFA president at Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center and student vice president of YCHS. She's been an active member of the York Comprehensive and Floyd D. Johnson community throughout her four years in high school. Congratulations.
We will now continue to reports, Ms. April Omer, Director of Elementary and Gifted Programs.
Good evening, Chairman, Children, members of the board and Superintendent Cox. I am delighted to be able to share with you tonight some of our summer programming opportunities we had. We're going to start with our elementary summer programs, which we focused on our summer reading camp and our ML camp, which we have deemed Camp Soul. So for those two programs, we had 52 students who attended Camp Soul and Summer Reading Camp with a 90% attendance rate. Our staff this year consisted of seven teachers, seven assistants, two literacy coaches, one nurse. We added a school counselor this year and two coordinators. And 62% of our students in Summer Reading Camp grew in their MAP from spring to the last one that we gave in summer. That will not include any of the students that were absent the days that we gave that MAP assessment. So during Summer Reading Camp and Camp Soul, we connected. Not only did we connect with each other, but we made outside connections. For example, Summer, Camp Soul was all about the Olympics. So everything they did went around the Summer Olympics, one activity the students participated in. As you can see in those pictures, is they were given rocks and they painted their rocks for their country that they represent. We made connections with our teachers by participating in STEM projects and activities. You can see Ms. Wallace and Ms. Nelson actually built their own little STEM project there with the students. Our Camp Soul students connected with Mr. Newman, who is one of our district ML teachers. Mr. Newman hosted a book fair every summer for the students in Camp Soul, where they're able to walk away with books of their choice. We connected with each other. This year, we added a guidance counselor to Summer Reading Camp. Ms. Grigg held SEL camp time every day with every class. We saw a big difference with our students and teachers this year with this new addition. We will keep this one up moving forward. And we also connected with each other through STEM activities with the scouts and those Olympic connections through Camp Soul. Thank you. We made connections through reading, math, and doing STEM and art activities every day. And we connected with our community partners. We have a list of them there. Shout out to Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center and our FFA. We had Boy Scouts, FCA, Draper Wildlife, York County Museum, and Black Peaches. See, we were able to take students on fishing experiments, experiences, some of them have never been able to do that. We learned about animal habitats at the York County Museum, and we actually built balloon race cars with the scouts. We reached all of our students through these activities, as well as the incorporation of physical and some sensory activities this summer. But most of all, we had fun. It was a really fun month of June with these students. That was elementary. Now we're going to transition over to secondary, secondary included fifth through 12th grade. So at YMS, we had 101 students in fifth through eighth grade who participated in the summer programming there. And those students were able to recover up to three courses and were taught by certified subject area teachers. At the high school, we had attendance recovery and credit recovery options for students. There were a total of 167 students who attended. Of the 167 students, 19 students participated in both attendance recovery and credit recovery. Students were enrolled and instructed through an online learning platform called Edge Annuity. And then we had our certified teachers there available to provide content-specific support to students and to monitor their progress. There were 111 students who participated in attendance recovery, and these students recovered 300 FAs. And there were 75 students who participated in credit recovery, and those students recovered 104 credits. So that's about an average of three courses per student with those FAs. And I would like to say, on behalf of everyone who helped our summer programs, thank you for your School District One for providing us this opportunity this summer to love and support our students.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We're sold. Thank you very much. Looks like the kids had a good time doing it.
They did. They had a blast.
Next up, for a summer project update, Mr. Charlie Westbrook, Director of Maintenance.
There we go. All right, I'll, I'd like to start a good evening, board. Thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about the hard work performed by the operations team during the summer. I'd like to start off with saying that the maintenance and studio staff have been extremely busy over the summer, getting the facilities ready for the start of school. Every year, the maintenance department has many routine jobs to complete, such as air filter changes, athletic field maintenance, general grounds maintenance, kitchen equipment maintenance, moving furniture, and teachers from school to school. Also moving student records, activity bus inspections, fire and safety inspections. Not to mention regular summer work orders, which I'll touch on at the end of the slideshow on one of the live screens. Custodians assist with moving furniture and teachers from room to room. I mentioned that, you know, in the maintenance department, we use the hall from school to school, but our custodians, they, they move from room to room and do a lot of it. So they clean floors, clean windows, replace ceiling tiles, disinfect classrooms and bathrooms. And this is just a small part of what they do over summertime. I know we say this a lot, but our maintenance custodians take pride in this district, and it shows. We're not perfect, but no one can say that we don't try. I'm going to go over some of our capital projects that we had, and I'll try to explain some of these pictures to you. I know it kind of gets confusing with a lot of hard to see pictures, but we'll start off, we did some fencing projects this, this summer. If you're familiar with the parking lot in Cotton Belt, you know, it's been wide open to the, to the playground, basically, for, you know, a good while. And we added some new playground equipment a couple of years ago, so we fenced all that in, that'll keep the kids safe and, you know, and out of the parking lot or, you know, anywhere close to it. Harold C. Johnson, as you can see over on the right, that was a Harold C. Johnson picture. That parking lot's kind of the same way. It's back there where the buses turn around and, and where people park also. So we were able to redo that fence and get it looking nice, plus get it, you know, in good shape. The other one we did was at Jefferson, we sectioned off one part of the playground on the end where students were open to 321, actually. And, and then we did a little bit more fencing in the back. So those three schools got fencing projects this summer, turned out really nice. They look good. Also Harold C. Johnson on the backside, near that, near that fenced-in playground I was talking about. They've been lacking some parking for a while back there, so we went in and we added, probably add about 25 parking spaces. So that, that should help them out a little bit on their parking situation over there. It turned out, turned out great, too. We actually did a air conditioning unit on the field house, which was a very big unit, you can see from, from the pictures. That was a, that was a unit that we have been having quite a bit of problems with, so we replaced it. We did that in-house. Our, our maintenance team did that completely on their own, so we didn't have any companies or anything come in and assist us with that. Maltz on the hill at the high school, this is something we've had, but we redid it this year. We went in and did a lot of work on the top of the hill because we, we were having a little bit of washing issues. So I think that's one thing that's very visible to the whole district and folks really comment on it a lot. I think this is the third year that we've had mulch on that bank, and I still get a lot of comments on, on, people think it looks really nice. And that's, like I said, it's kind of in your face when you go up Alexander Love, so we try to keep it in good shape. And we plan to look, to maybe even do some more on farther down eventually. We wanted to get this because that was the worst place. Over at Jefferson, we went in and placed some new gates, which are like bar tube type gates there in the parking lot. If you've seen there before, they would use chains, plastic chains to mark off, and the custodians would go out and swap traffic patterns around during the day and things, so this will make it a lot nicer, a lot cleaner. The, the gates look really good. They've got reflectors on them, so, you know, people won't come through there at night and not see them or whatever. So turned out, they turned out really great, and I'm sure others will be wanting them after seeing those. Three of our big projects this summer were carpet. We ended up, I'm going to start off with Hickory Grove. Just show you some before pictures, and I always like to show the, the hallways with the stuff in them that the custodians have moved. So the way we do this is we go in and we move everything out of the classrooms into the hall. And then we go down each, each hall and, and we, we go back and we do, you know, the classrooms one at a time, all the way till we get to the end. Then once we do that, we move all the furniture back out of the hall into the classrooms and then do the halls and work our way out. So that's kind of the, the process of the carpet. You can see in that middle frame there that that's a classroom that's had the, the carpet and the tile ripped up, so it's getting ready to be carpeted down there. So I'm going to let this video just kind of go just a little ways, but the one on the left is just a video, you can see all, that's a pretty long hallway. So you can see it's quite a bit of stuff moved. It's processed, believe me. But you can also look on the right and see the end result, and it's worth it, so everything looks, looks really, really good. Carpet turned out great at all the schools that we did it. So this is us removing carpet from one of the classrooms. The old carpet was the old roll style carpet that's stuck down. Unbelievable. So they bring this machine in and it, it basically scrapes everything up. They also use that to remove tile, too. And then the finished product on the right is one of the new classrooms at Hickory Grove, which has a really cool design and it looks good. This gets the award for the most changed room in the district, and that's the media center out of Hickory Grove. They, if you can see on the left, we filled in the, I call it a reading nook, but it's kind of like a little sunken area. Some schools still have those. Where basically kind of like steps, but we wanted to get that out of there. We did the same thing at Hunter Street a couple of years ago when we did carpet there, and we, we went in and filled that in. That was another thing we did in-house that basically decked the floor and, and covered it back over carpet. And then we went back in with some, some more neutral colors, and they got new furniture and stuff coming into the media center out there, so it looked brandy, looked really good. Not only did we put in carpet, but we also do what we call LVT, which is luxury vinyl tile. And that's what you'll see now in our, a lot of our cafeterias. The middle frame is a hall at the high school, which is on the backside. It's kind of like a service hall back there behind the cafeteria and where the central receiving is. It's kind of like a service hall back there behind the cafeteria and, um, where the, uh, central receiving is, where we bring in a lot of supplies and things. So we put it there too, it's real durable flooring and, uh, and it's easy to clean up. So we have a lot of stuff, you know, dripping and going in and out of that hallway is the reason we put it there. That's also why we do it in the cafeterias. On the right-hand screen is, uh, one of the bathrooms, uh, that we did at Hickory Grove. And, and that's what we started doing when we replaced carpet is, is do epoxy flooring, which is a pore-in type flooring. It's very durable, holds up good and, uh, it looks really nice too. This is, uh, York, I mean York Intermediate, excuse me. It's, um, we put new carpet in the hallways at York Intermediate only this year. But, uh, we went and done that one and then repainted the halls. So that's just a couple of folk, a couple of pictures of, uh, before, you know, after we got done with the carpet and, and hall painting at York Intermediate. Back to the, this is the same picture you saw on the right, that's the, the hall at the high school. And then over on the art hall, Art R O T C, that's the new carpet that we, we put into that hall. So, uh, real colorful and looks, looks really good. We get, uh, lots of new patterns and things to choose from every time we do carpet and it, it gets better and better. And then for the last, uh, project where we started on, I wanted to, it's hard to do. We're doing due diligence on the, uh, rag arena, the due diligence package basically and it's soil testing and different things. And not really much stuff I can do a real cool picture of except for this drill rig right here, so. Um, but I thought that was pretty neat to show and show them out there doing soil bore and soil samples at there. So we've been working on that a good bit this summer too. Um, I spoke earlier, so our maintenance crew, I went and looked, I went back and looked and from, from graduation day till August first, uh, they did three hundred and nineteen work orders. So that's quite a bit when you factor in all the other stuff that we do too. But that's, that's just regular standard work orders that they completed over the summer. So we completed, closed those out. So that's, uh, that's a pretty good, pretty good bit of work put out by ten guys. So just wanted to make note of that. And then, um, I wanted to close with a, with a quote from a book that some of you may re, uh, may have read, may, may have heard about it, but it's, uh, In Potential by Adam Grant. Many thanks to our maintenance and custodial staff who find motivation in the daily grind, gain momentum in the face of stagnation and turn difficulties and doubts into sources of strength. Alrighty, thought that fit us pretty good. All right, if you got any questions, I'll be happy to answer any, for any of our projects or anything that's going on.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Mr. Westbrook?
I don't have any questions, but I am wholly impressed at all y'all did this summer in this shortened summer.
Believe me, it was a quick one.
I, I personally tried to put down epoxy in my garage and it didn't quite look like.
Now you know again.
That's right.
I'll call Charlie next time.
I'm just curious and I'm very proud of all you got done this summer. Are you able to keep up with the work orders with your staff?
Yes, ma'am, right now we are.
That's why we did that.
Yep, we're keeping up. I mean, it is, it is, it is a lot to keep up with honestly, but, but so far we're doing good. I mean, and, and there again, it speaks to the maintenance guys. I mean, they all, they all really go at it pretty hard, so, and I appreciate it. I mean, they do a lot, they do a lot to help me out, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know one of the things of the, you know, the budget and things like that, it's always amazing how much y'all do internal. Uh, we know that's a savings to the district and everybody, you know, even somebody watching this to be aware of that. Um, everybody has instant grati, instant gratification they want now. Um, we know there's a lot of things that happen during the day that you need to address. So can you just tell me a little bit of difference about, I mean, we know what you're doing this summer, right? But day to day, you don't have to go into much detail, just kind of some of the things that, you know, are just normal maintenance items, just out of curiosity.
Uh, we have, I would say our two number one items that we get the most work orders on and stay the farthest behind on would be air conditioning and, uh, plumbing.
Okay.
That's probably our two number ones that we get the most work orders on. And the rest of the stuff, you know, it's, it's very steady, but it doesn't overwhelm us like some of that does at times. Um, but, you know, like I said, we, we do pretty good. We try really hard to, to keep things, you know, within a week or so, I mean, at, at max, you know. Normally, my mind, I mean, I try to stay around three days, you know, and I, and I try to tell the guys to, you know, to touch base with the teachers. And if, if, if it's looking like we're gonna be several days or if we got parts ordered for an air conditioning unit or something like that, we just, we try to communicate and I know that's a big deal if you can just, most people are understanding if you can just communicate with them a little bit. Tell them, tell them what's happening.
Well, I think y'all do a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was impressed by the mulch. I, I was impressed until, you know, I saw somebody blowing it in there.
Yeah.
I thought somebody had a shovel just getting, you know.
Oh, yeah.
I come by there several times a day and it's, it's not done one day, the next day it's, it's all theirs.
That's right.
I was kind of disappointed in the blowing it on.
Yep, we, uh, we probably should have done that at night where they wouldn't have saw. We could have popped their trucks in there late maybe.
Well, we, we do appreciate it, you and all your staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, now I have Office of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowlin.
Good evening. I have a couple of items tonight, four items to be specific, and the first one is actually a presentation. So I'm excited to be able to do a presentation for y'all. Um, the first part tonight is going to be our new employee orientation. Um, and just to share a little bit about what we did over our three days of new employee orientation. Um, just want to share that the first day we did, um, just included all new staff and it was an introduction to our district, which included presentations from operations, special services, student services, safety, transportation and instruction. Then the afternoon was dedicated to the H R team where we shared about how they get paid, where do they, where they can see their pay stub, all of those important things that they would like to know. And also talked about just employee conduct and some things with sick leave, personal leave and other items like that. The next day was dedicated to our certified staff and our instruction team and instructional coaches oriented them around the teaching and learning framework. And they also modeled some practices while introducing the new staff to instruction in York School District One. The last day was for teachers that are coming from out of state and new to the profession. And this day was dedicated to orienting, orienting them around the four-point-O evaluation model that they will be evaluated with during the school year. And Dr. Wendy Seismore and Alyssa Cox led this day with our group of educators. There was a lot of planning that went into these three days and I want to give a big thank you to our H R team because these ladies make me look good, I'll just say. They did the, um, the, all the task of making sure we had great food to eat. We made everybody feel good and welcome and they made sure everything was so well organized for everyone. And we started the day with a huge welcome to our new staff that included the Y C H S cheerleaders. We had R O T C there to help us with parking and we also had Ms. Y C H S there to greet everyone as they came in. And this is just a few photos of our new employees coming in on our new employee orientation. Once they entered, they had stations that they were able to go to, the, one of the stations where, where they would have their I D made. And another station is where Tim Cooper helped them into getting into their email and making sure they knew how to log in. Um, some of the staff that were included in new employee orientation, we had one bookkeeper, um, three bus drivers, three bus monitors, twelve instructional assistants, three receptionists slash chef attorneys, one transportation dispatcher, two mental health counselors, fifty-four teachers, twenty-four first-year teachers out of that number of fifty-four, one psychologist, one assistant principal and one interim principal. And these are just some pictures of them learning together. And we gave them an opportunity to meet their fellow coworkers. We had them sitting by tables by school, but they also had time to meet other people within our district that were also new to the district. And this last slide kind of shows, we had a cougar come to visit us, of course, for lunch, for photo ops and them to have the opportunity to get their picture made with a cougar. Um, but our hiring season starts as early as January for the next school year. And then also classified staff are, they are entering all throughout the school year. So we had over ninety-four employees to be invited to new employee orientation that were hired starting in January of twenty twenty-four, which included fifty-one certified employees and thirty-seven classified employees. We had a group of new employees and we're so happy that they are here to join us because they're a wonderful group of people. Really enjoy getting to meet them. Um, and I always put this plug in, make sure you follow us on Facebook, um, where we get sharing all the great things that are happening in our H R department. And we also like to highlight some of our employees on there monthly with the employee spotlight. So we'd love for you to be able to follow us and see some of those things that we're highlighting within the district to hopefully get more people excited about coming to York School District One and seeing the great things that we're doing here. Um, and we also have a LinkedIn page. Um, this is something new that we started last year, but it's under York School District One instead of H R. Just so if you're on LinkedIn, please check that out also. Do you have any questions for me about new employee orientation?
Any questions? Good information. Thank you, Ms. Bowlin.
No problem. Onto, um, action item number two, which is certified recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Now, before you certify recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is there a motion to approve certified recommendations as presented?
I move to approve the certified recommendations as presented.
Have a motion by Ms. Howell, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Rebels. Any need to, for discussion, we need to go into executive session. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
My third item is certified resignations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Have before you certify resignations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is there a motion to accept resignations as presented?
So move for adoption.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And my last item is a new classified position and this one is administration where recommended approval as presented.
So before you have a new classified position, administra, administration recommends approval as presented, do I have a motion?
I move for approval as presented.
Motion by Ms. Howell, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bowlin. We'll now have Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Hagner.
Good evening. I have quite a list for you all tonight. Um, the first is approval of our Agency Construction Management Services. Um, as you all recall, this is a refresher that we, you all approved a resolution for a ninety million dollar bond referendum um, at the November twenty-fourth election. Um, as a part of that, we need to onboard a construction management company. Uh, so we did that, we put out a R F Q. Um, those proposals were due on July first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, they were, they were, sorry, they were due on July thirty-first. We had six firms submit proposals. Um, after a committee review, we recommend to award our Agency Construction Management Services to L M G and I ask for your approval.
Uh, I will now hand the gavel over to Mr. Rebels run the meeting. Uh, I will be recusing myself on this item due to a business relationship.
And I also am recusing myself. My husband's company has an ongoing, uh, business relationship with L M G.
Madam Secretary, please let the record reflect that Mr. Childers and Ms. Faulner have left the room for discussion. Terms of the board, you have a four-year recommendation from staff for the, uh, contract with L M G for our Agency Construction Management Services for the upcoming bond referendum. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Howell. Any discussion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And at this time I will ask Ms. Faulner and Mr. Childers to come back to the room.
Okay, I'll continue on. The next is the approval of our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five millage rate. Um, as a part of our budget process, you all approved, um, the operating millage increase. It was a nine-mill increase on the operating side, so that increases our millage to two hundred and thirty-one point six. Um, at this time, we'll also need to set the debt service millage. Um, that is recommended to stay at eighty-four mils, the same as it was in twenty-three, twenty-four. So I ask for your approval for the operating millage at two thirty-one point six and debt service millage of eighty-four mils.
Is there a motion to set the debt service rate at eighty-four mils for the mill rate at twenty-three to twenty-four? Wait a minute, ooh, I read that wrong. Um, I'm just gonna say, is there a motion to set the current, set the new millage rate? Um, and then with the millage rate for general operations, two thirty-one point six with being a nine-mill increase over the twenty-three, twenty-four physical year, are you okay with that motion? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Are you looking to have an amendment to what I said or something? I just want to make sure.
No.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to let Ms. Hagner explain the amount that we could have raised the millage this year versus what we are raising it.
Let me dig back to June. Um, yes, I think, I believe the final amount was around seventeen mils that we could have, that we could have raised. Um, we used our look-back millage. As you all recall, we can go back three years and capture millage that we didn't levy. Um, and so that's what we did. So we went back and captured the millage we left on the table last year, plus a little bit of what we were allowed this year, which does leave some remaining millage that we could capture in future years. So as opposed to a seventeen-mill increase, uh, you all approved a nine-mill increase.
I just want that record to reflect how well we're managing our constituents' money.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or discussion items? Ask for a vote on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
My next item is a minority business enterprise utilization, utilization plan. Um, as you all know, we had to pass and, uh, follow under the state consolidated procurement code. As a part of that, districts are required to have a plan, a minority business enterprise utilization plan, an M B E plan. And basically what that does, it allows, uh, minority businesses to have the opportunity to fully participate in our district's procurement process. Um, a couple of things I do want to point out that this is, um, this is a plan, not a policy, so it only has to have one reading. Um, it does include minority businesses, so that includes disadvantaged, whether it's socially or economically, women minority-owned businesses. And what we have found through this process is a lot of people claim to be a minority-owned business, but unless they have a license, we cannot count them in our report. So as a part of your package tonight, you'll approve our plan, but for information, there's a report in there that will, will start including this twice a year, um, just for your information. And so what we did is on our procurement webpage, we have, um, two different links. One link is for businesses to go see who qualifies, who has the license. The other link is for individuals who are, business who are interested in getting that license. It directs them to the state site how to, and how to go through that process. So tonight I ask for your approval for the plan.
Do we have a motion for approval of the minority business enterprise utilization plan?
So move.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rebels, any discussion? I, I will just reiterate, Ms. Hagner, from, from what you said. I, I will just reiterate, Ms. Hagner, from, from what you said, because I know there's, there's discussion about this usually. When somebody's not registered as an MBE, it, it does have an effect. So with York being a small rural district, it, it makes it harder. And we see that sometimes with different school districts, but just wanted to throw that out for anybody listening or, you know, on the record of, it is, it is a, it is a plan, but it also takes the, the people who want to be a part of that plan as well.
That's right. Thank you. Last item is just a, have any more questions?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
My last item is just an Agarena update. It's getting all exciting. Got all kinds of things going on. So just from the last time we met, as you know, our legislators have been extremely gracious to us and very supportive of our Agarena. Since we last talked, we did receive an additional three million dollars in the twenty-four, twenty-five legislative budget year. This brings our total dollars of four-point-two-five million that we have received at a state level. In addition to that, we had a barn-raising event back in May, and we had a couple of huge donations at that event. One was fifteen thousand dollars from York Electric Cooperative and twelve thousand dollars from the York Rotary Club. The last report I got in our account that our foundation is running, there's an additional just some one-off donations. We've got about seven thousand dollars. We'll get another report at our foundation meeting next week. I have talked to them, and there's some other donations that have been into that account. So excited about that. So you can see kind of what's been presented for the project. We are working off a five-and-a-half million dollar budget right now. So you can see, we're well on our way to that five-and-a-half, and very appreciative of our legislators supporting this process. And, and in doing so, we wanted to thank them. And so what we did, and you all were part of that, we sent some letters to our delegation, just telling them how much we appreciate it. It was signed by the chair of the two board members, two boards, York and Clover, and also the chairs of the two foundations of Cloverleaf and York School District One Education Foundation. So those were sent just about a month or so ago to our legislative delegation. As Charlie mentioned earlier, we sent, we did bid package for our site due diligence. That's been happening. We've been getting reports back from that. We still have to do, you can see a list in here, what's kind of included in that. The last piece of that is the traffic impact analysis. That should be happening in the next couple of weeks. And then at that time, we'll get Jumper Carter Sees, our architects, we'll get them back in to meet with Charlie and I and LMG to look at all the reports and start looking at how we can, where it's going to be on the property, what it's going to look like, and start working out all those details. And well, once we get the site due diligence package back, we'll start finalizing those things. Last thing I want to update you on is Pratt Circle. As you know, that runs through the property. And so we got permission from the county to post signage and advertise so that we could take over ownership of that. So Charlie posted signage at the property. We had to advertise it in the Rock Hill Herald for three consecutive weeks. We did not receive any phone calls while it was advertised or posted for that three-week period. And so at this point in time, our attorneys are in the process of contacting the court system, and so we hope to have that taken care of in the next couple of weeks. So I will update you on that once that process is complete. And that's kind of where we are right now, so I'm happy to answer any questions about Agarena that you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that we're operating off of a five-point-five million budget. Do we believe it can be built for that?
That's what we're working towards, yes, ma'am.
So we reduced it from the seven.
From seven-four to five-five.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Hagner, just, I guess we're public information, some of those reductions are based on us finding ways to not necessarily make it a cheaper product, but reduce some of the areas where we're.
Well, now that we've got the topo done, that's helping us see where we need to position the arena. And so we've had conversations. It may not look like the drawings that were originally published. We gotta do what's the best use of our resources. Talking about parking, one of the things that I was meeting the other week is our engineer, the engineering firm is going ahead, going ahead and start having those conversations with York County and our proposal, portion of it's going to be gravel and a portion of it's going to be paved. And so they're starting those conversations right now. And the seven-point-four million, it was all paved. So those are some of the things that we're redo, that we're doing to reduce the cost.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, so I got one more.
You do?
So my last is another, is an action item on policy updates. You can see the list before you of policies for second reading, and I ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve for second reading as presented by administration for policy EBCB, EBCB dash R, EBCB dash E one, EBCB dash E two, EEAC dash R, KF, KF dash E one, and to be determined for artificial, artificial intelligence. Do I have a motion?
So move for adoption for the second reading of the listed policies.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Now turn it over to Officer Superintendent, Ms. Kelly Cox.
Board Chair and Board Members, apologize that our screens aren't working here on the desk in front of you, so you're seeing the back of folks' heads as they look at the monitors, but if you'll bear with us. I'm very excited to talk you through our opening and what we have done to prepare for this school year and the work that we're planning for the year. Our theme this year is elevating to excellence. We began in July on a two-day retreat, July seventeen and eighteen. Administrators went to Greenville, South Carolina for our administrative professional learning based in the text Hidden Potential by Adam Grant. Charlie, I can't tell you how happy it made my heart for you to include a quote from that book in your presentation this evening. Well played.
I'd too like that.
Board members, we had ordered you the books as well. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, I will say, I've done the presentation with our support staff here in the district office, as well as the schools and administrators, and the support staff got excited and they wanted copies. So I gave your copies away to them, and Ms. Webb and I will get you more copies. It really is a great book. Three of the key takeaways that we have gleaned with us as we go forward into the school year. Excellence isn't accidental in any organization. It begins when leaders make a conscious decision to create the conditions where excellence thrives. So we internally have talked a lot about changing our structures so that we help people shift their behaviors so that we are striving toward excellence. Secondly, to be top-rated by people both inside and outside of our organization, leaders must have a strong vision of what organizational excellence looks like and how to achieve that. So we already have folks that are visiting other schools, other districts, and we're spending time describing what does it look like if we are excellent? And we are benchmarking ourselves around where we would like to be. And then finally, without leadership commitment, high performance may happen in pockets, but it does not have a recognizable impact on the entire system. What we're looking for and our motivation as an administrative team, including that group of fantastic principals that are seated back there, mostly in the back right, but two over here to the left, we want to create a system that operates such that regardless of who's here, if any of us are no longer here, if any of you is bored or no longer here, the system itself operates. It is so ingrained that the work that we do continues into the future. I would like to note that we had two sponsors, both Admentum and Whiten Storey Legal Firm, provided the cost to cover the expenses of our administrative retreat. The other thing that we've pulled out of Hidden Potential is the relationship between character and personality. Personality is your predisposition. It's how you're born. It's your basic instincts for how you think, feel, and act. But your character is your capacity to prioritize your values over your instincts. And Adam Grant describes it as, if your personality is how you respond on a typical day, character is how you show up on a hard day. He takes it further and describes three character traits that are specifically critical when you're trying to find the hidden potential within an individual, but more importantly, within an organization. Those three traits are determination. A determined leader is willing to step out of their comfort zone, to try things they haven't mastered, to keep at it over and over, even when they make mistakes. The second character trait is proactivity. A proactive leader seeks out knowledge and feedback that they need. They take advice that helps them grow, even when that advice is critical. One of the things that we talked a lot about is Adam Grant suggests that you don't ask someone, how did I do? Because that's an autopsy. You can't change anything about what you've done. But what would I do differently next time? If I want to be a ten, what do I do differently next time? And that takes the advice forward-looking, constantly improving, which fits so nicely with our concept of being a learning organization. Want to be better tomorrow than we are today. And the final character trait is discipline. A disciplined leader judges thoughtfully where to spend their effort. There's so many things that we need to do, but what's critical? Where should we be spending the priority amount of time? And then setting goals and sticking to those goals. I take you then into convocation. We were super excited to hold our annual convocation in the auditorium at YCHS. Thank you to Dr. Tharp and Dr. Green and everyone at the school for opening up the auditorium for us and having everything prepared. These are just a few candid snapshots of the day. I wanted to share these with you so that if you were not able to attend as a board member, or those who may be listening with us virtually, we had a great day of celebrating a new school year. We did pep rally style. We did competition between the schools on spirit, and I could say, I'm glad I don't have to say who the winning school was, because each school really brought it. It was a great day. Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead, Tim. Our guest speaker that day is there in the middle of your screen. That's Jeff Evans. Jeff Evans is the gentleman who you may have heard of. He had the privilege of leading a blind hiker to the top of Mount Everest. He is the only blind hiker who has made it to the top of Mount Everest, and Jeff Evans was his guide. He gave us incredible lessons about that experience that really were relatable to what we do here in York School District One. Super day of learning. Thank you to Scott, who set the tone. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback if you were not present. Scott opened it up with comments about our new cell phone policy and the commitment of district administration, as well as the school board, to stand behind the schools and the teachers as they implement this change. Scott, that was really well-received, and I appreciate your being willing to do that. Go ahead, Tim. And then finally, we celebrated our Teachers of the Year and our Staff Members of the Year. Jenny, as you can see here pictured, was our twenty, twenty-four Teacher of the Year. And as a surprise to her and everyone else in attendance, thank you to Ms. Spangler and to Ms. Boland, who were able to organize a relationship with Burns Ford, and she has been presented a vehicle for use during her tenure as Teacher of the Year. So very excited about that. Jeff Evans, the speaker at convocation, has written a book, Climbing Through the Storms. Board members, each of you have a copy of his book at your seat, and he took the time to autograph these for you. So those are autographed versions of the book. In addition, board members, each of you have our shirt for the school year. It says, "The York Way," and it shows our theme of the year, elevating to excellence. Thank you to Ms. Coon for the design graphics and for getting those for us. One of the things that Mr. Evans talked about was VUCA environments. That is not a term that he coined. It's actually a military term, and it stands for volatile, uncertain, and complex, ambiguous environments, and how stressful it can be to navigate in those environments. So he flipped it and gave an optimistic lens in which to view. You can counter volatility by having a clear vision, knowing where you're going. You can counter uncertainty by being understanding, counter complexity by being clear, by, by expressing clarity in your communication, and then finally, ambiguous situations by being agile, knowing that one must flip and pivot. You'll be hearing lots more about our learnings from Jeff and Climbing Through the Storms. The takeaway that we have used here so far with our administrators and our administrators introduced to their staffs in their opening state-of-the-school addresses are the Sherpa Lessons for Leadership. A Sherpa is a person who guides folks in their expeditions, and Sherpas are not about making it themselves. If you know anything about what a Sherpa does, they take pride in getting the climber to the top of the mountain. So what are the lessons that we can learn? The real job is to lead others to the summit, whether you make it or not. Jeff Evans told a very heart-wrenching story of where he almost didn't make it to the summit because he made a decision that would better the chances of his team making it. So putting others first. Detailed planning is critical. You can only imagine the planning that must go into an expedition to the top of a mountain such as Mount Everest, very much like the planning that our administrators and teachers have to prepare in order to deliver deliberate and intentional lessons that meet kids where they are. Expect and prepare for setbacks. No matter how well you plan, things are not going to go according to plan. You're going to get the storm that blows in from the mountain, or you're going to get the social media outcry on something in your local community. Plan for setbacks. Finally, walk with your team. Build trust. That was one that really spoke to me, because we all view things differently. We have different opinions, but if we can collectively agree that our goal is to make it to the summit, that trust is built on all of us having the shared collective goal. That's a different kind of trust. And then lastly, be a great listener. Being a listener with your ears, but also reading a room, being attuned to how your people are. He spoke specifically about if you're leading a blind gentleman to the summit, you had to read him, and you had to prepare to take him. So you had to read your person that day and then modify the plans based on where that person is. That's what our teachers do every day when they're delivering instruction. Where's my class? Where's this individual? What do I need to give them to move forward? Really excited about the kickoff, and I think it's something that we can use to carry ourselves forward. Next is just a bit of an overview. This is a refresher for everyone, but sharing so that we have it publicly in a board meeting as well. As you all know, Proviso 1.103 was adopted as part of the physical twenty-four, twenty-five appropriations act, and in short, it prohibits any student or anyone from having their cell phone during the school day as defined by the start and end bells. In preparation for, excuse me, in preparation for implementing this law, the district initiated communication, and then the schools followed up behind the district with communication. We wanted to make sure that when kids arrived on the first day, they already knew this rule. Since, since I put this package together, we have received a copy of the draft policy from State Board Education, and we are reviewing it. I understand that they did not vote on it today, but we are following that and will be bringing forward policy as it is developed. We already had consequences in our board policy, so we are utilizing those consequences. They are: First offense, the student loses the phone for the remainder of the day and it is returned to them. Second offense, the student refuses, loses the phone for a remainder of the day and it's given to the parent or legal guardian. They must pick it up at the end of the day. They must pick it up at the end of the day. The third and subsequent offense, the student loses the phone. It is confiscated and kept for 30 days. Parent may get it at the end of 30 days. And then a Level 2 offense is if the person just refuses to hand it over, at which case our teachers have been instructed, "Do not engage in a battle with students." That becomes an administrative issue. At that point, the administrator takes over. I thought you may be interested to know how it has gone thus far. So on the next slide, you can see the number of phones that we have collected at the middle school and at the high school. Haven't reported elementary because we haven't had to collect them. Any, to my knowledge, at elementary, they've never allowed phones in the elementary level anyway. Middle school have had one phone collected on two different days. High school started out with a high of 21. We had a low of 6 one day, and then yesterday's number was at 16. Considering the population at the high school, you can see that the greatest we've reached was on that first day, accounting for 1.6% of our population. I did confirm today that of those students, there are some that are second offenses, but none that have reached the third offense. So no one has lost their phone for 30 days. The next item that I have for you is just a screenshot here. Board members, you do have on your tables a copy of our student-teacher ratios as of today, as well as the 10-day count through Day 8. With the weather day, we will extend the 10-day count so that we have a full collection of 10 days. On the core ratio, I will point out to you, as you can see, we're sitting very nicely. At this point, we have a low core ratio of 18.2 at Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary School in our 5K through 4th grade, and a high of 20.12 at Hunter Street. All of those are still below our desired core ratio of 1 to 21.5. So we're doing well on our core ratios thus far. On our 10-day enrollment, you will notice that there has been quite an increase on day by day. I'll run down the days for you. Day 1, we had 4,228 students. Day 2, 4,450. Day 3, 4,687. Day 4, 4,755. Day 5, 4,792. Day 6, 4,829. And Day 7, 4,876. I remind you that we do start school on a staggered start for 3K and 4K. Approximately a third of those students came on A1 the first day. Another third on Friday, A2. Another third on Monday, A5. And then they were all accounted for by Tuesday, A6, with the exception of our Montessori program. They do a bit of a different stagger in. And by August the 19th, we will have all of our Montessori kids. So we're still watching this. It's a little too early for me to give you any kind of real deep dive into the difference between our enrollment numbers and our 10-day counts. Mr. Queen with Student Services is actually working on a project to bring that information to you at an upcoming meeting. But as you have questions, we're certainly happy to take those and include them in that presentation. Wanted to give you a staffing update as well. We have one certified vacancy. It was originally at the middle level with YMS, but we got creative, thanks to Ms. Boland and Mr. Ferris over at YOA. And our middle-level math teacher at YOA has been transferred to the middle school. So we're meeting the need there at the middle school, and now we're backfilling the position at YOA. So we still have one certified opening, but the scope of impact on that opening is much smaller. And Ms. Boland shared with me verbally today that she believes she has a lead on a certified sub. So we're excited about that. We have three classified vacancies that, quite honestly, we paused on filling until we got school year up and running. People's plates are pretty full right now. And then in conclusion, this is a quote that I shared at Convocation, and I'd like to read it to you here. This is an Adam Grant quote. "Becoming a creature of discomfort can unlock hidden potential in many different types of learning. Summoning the nerve to face discomfort is a character skill, an especially important form of determination. It takes three kinds of courage. One, the courage to abandon your tried-and-true methods. Two, to put yourself in the ring before you feel ready. And three, to make more mistakes than others make attempts. The best way to accelerate growth is to embrace, seek, and amplify discomfort. When we're comfortable, we're not growing. So we're committing to embracing the discomfort as we elevate to excellence." Happy to answer any questions that you may have about that report.
Do you have any questions? Comments?
I will say Convocation, I thought, was great. I think I've been to all of them. Well, I missed one. But I probably got more positive comments. Usually, I get no comments. I think I got more positive comments from that convocation than I had before. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We have received quite a few positive comments. I would like to share, if you don't mind, one anecdotal story. I was walking through high school in Floyd D today, and I ran into a gentleman. I will not call his name because I did not ask permission to share the story. He is new to our district, but not new to education. And I said, "How's it going?" And he said, "I finally found home." He said, "I now have a spirit, and I'm recommitted to teaching. I was ready to leave the profession. I have found home." Think that speaks volumes to the climate that our principals are creating in their buildings. The next item that I have for you are upcoming dates. I'd like to draw your attention to Open House at the high school. It will be on the 21st, I understand, at 5:00 PM. Summer Fest is on Saturday, August the 24th. We will have a district presence again at Summer Fest. Those that are signing up for Summer Fest are terribly excited because we have upgraded from a tent where we will be dying in the heat to the early learning mobile bus. So we will have air conditioning that we can step into periodically to cool off. Plus, we wanted to showcase the bus at Summer Fest. So very excited about that. We have our work session on the 27th. We will be closed for the Labor Day holiday. It is currently a teacher-work day, professional day, on September the 4th. And then again, your meeting in September. The next item, maybe the 4th?
Yes, ma'am.
The next item that's on the agenda is the School Board Law Conference update. And Chair Childers, we included that on here in case any of you who attended wanted to speak to anything that you learned.
I'll open it up to Ms. Johnson, Ms. Faulkner, or Mr. McSwain, if you had any comments on the conference.
Everybody's looking at me, huh?
Well, that was my first experience, being woke up at 5:20 for a fire alarm. Gave me a new outlook on life and what it's like to stay in a hotel. So that was my experience. But the conference was actually really good. I enjoyed it. That was a nice highlight.
Well, I didn't like the fire drill.
I don't think it was a drill.
I was on the 12th floor, so I did not like going down 12 flights. However, I did enjoy the conference. The first two general sessions were very informative. We got to learn a lot about IEP plans and 504 plans, which was very interesting to me. The breakout sessions were good this year. I brought my little notes back, and you don't want me to go over all of the things I have. But the classes were very good. Now, I will tell you, for the first time in 24 years, I did not attend Sunday. I have never missed a conference, but it was not my fault. The hotel checked me out. So I got really upset with them, and I told them, "Keep me checked out. I'm going home." So other than that, the conference was very good. I even enjoyed the food, and I often do not enjoy that food. But it was very good, very informative. And I do have a lot of notes that I took at the conference, and it was worth going. School Law is one of my favorite conferences. I always tell Ms. Webb, "I can miss the others." But this is my favorite. But now the hotel, a lot to be desired. But other than that, we had a great conference. I learned a lot. And for the 504 plan, I need to ask a lot of questions, Dr. Greason, but because I'm going to need some answers with a few of those things. But we had a great weekend conference ride. Thank you, Mr. Childers.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'll just say this year was the first year that, you know, you realize how many provisos and new laws and how many things went through the State House this year, through the House and Senate. On Sunday, they went through a lot of those items. There was a lot of questions. Actually, a good bit of emotion that day. So it was good in that everybody now can be on the same page of what some of these laws actually mean. So that was at the end, but I agree with the points everybody else made as far as the rest of it. But the laws and the new provisos, it's just, you know, we have a lot that we are dealing with as a board. There's provisos and laws that might not necessarily align between state and federal, but, you know, we're walking through those.
That's all that I have for you this evening.
Okay.
I will say one other thing. Don't have the same name as someone else. Because that was one of my problems. They're too petty Johnsons, and they checked me out for the other one. Oh, yeah.
So that stated, thank you, Ms. Cox. Is there a need for an executive session? If so, do I have a motion?
So I move for executive session.
I have a motion for executive session by Ms. Johnson. Have a second by Ms. Faulkner. I would like to state that per Section 30-4-70, we will be going into executive session for certified personnel and legal matters. You okay with that amendment, Ms. Johnson?
I am.
Ms. Faulkner?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We will now go into executive session. Thank you.
On executive session?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Howell. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a-- there were no actions taken in the executive session? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved by adjourned.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson to adjourn, second by Mr. Revels. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are now adjourned.